Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting, April 22nd, 2025. Our first order of business would be to stand and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bob, agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move to approve. Second?
Got a motion and a second for the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Our next order of business is County Ditch Five. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the continuation hearing of County Ditch Five for the proposed petition and outlet under Minnesota Statute 103 E 401. Good morning, Ryan. Agenda review. Any changes?
There are no changes, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion for the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion and a second for the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The purpose of today's hearing is to continue the public hearing and comment portion of the April 8th, 2025 public hearing. For this proceed, public comments should be relevant only to the April 8th, 2025 hearing and reports, which was continued until today's date due to defective publication notice. The order of business of the hearing is as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents, and then we will open it up, hearing, open up the public hearing. I will ask Ryan Hindiker for the public publications at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hearing notices were mailed out to landowners on March 25th, 2025. Notice was also posted outside of this building, the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse. Public affidavit was run in the Mancito Free Press on March 25th, April 1st, 8th, and 15th. By motion, the Drainage Authority on April 8th. Continue today's hearing, and I also have a memo. Blue Earth County Ditch Five watershed is approximately 10,200 acres in size, located primarily in Danville, Meadville Township. Petition outlet additional acres in the CD5 was received on September 27th of 2024. Drainage Authority Attorney KLR Van Brugen of Rankin-Neunen reviewed the petition and supporting documents and found it to be adequate for these proceedings. On October 22nd, 2024, the Drainage Authority appointed Engineer Charles J. Brando of ISG to review the petition and order an engineer's review report to be submitted to the Drainage Authority for the proposed effects to the County Ditch Five public drainage system. The Drainage Authority also appointed Viewer Mark Behrens to prepare a viewer report with recommendations for an outlet fee and benefits for the property. Both reports have been received by Blue Earth County Drainage Management staff. On March 25th, 2025, by assigned findings in order, the County Ditch Five Drainage Authority set a time and date for this final hearing for the proposed petition to outlet additional lands in the County Ditch Five. On April 8th of 2025, a public hearing was held for this petition to outlet. Due to the defective publication notice, the Drainage Authority by approved motion chose to continue this public hearing to April 22nd, 2025, and 9:00 a.m. At today's continuation hearing, public comment will be accepted pertaining only to this proposed petition and the continuation of the original April 8th, 2025 hearing. Today's action requested. At today's continued final hearing, we're asking the Drainage Authority to consider the approval of the drafted or subsequently amended findings in order, and order the approval granting the petition to outlet additional acres in the County Ditch Five pending the conditions of the order met and outlet fees are paid. That is all I have. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Ryan.
I'll move the jurisdictional documents.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the jurisdictional documents. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. At this time, we will reopen the public comment portion of the hearing. If you would like to make a comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, we are meeting, the meeting is being recorded, and there's a five-minute limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you have used your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit time allocated to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter, under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the County Ditch for this hearing continuation? Anyone wishing to comment? Last time, anyone wishing to comment on the public hearing continuation? Seeing no public comment from the public, I will oppose the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the county board for action.
I move to accept the findings in order, order the approval, granting the petition for additional acres for outlet in County Ditch Five. Pending conditions of the order are met, and the fees are paid.
Second? Thank you, Commissioner. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion at the county board level? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your time and coming in for the meeting and the public informational meetings we had before this. Thank you to the viewers and ISG for coming in to answer questions if we had them. Appreciate that. At this time, we will move on to our next item for the county board, and that would be County Ditch 56, set a hearing. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you said, County Ditch 56, what we set in the hearing for a petition for reroute under 103 E.227. County Ditch 56 watershed is approximately 9,400 acres in size and located in Garden City and Lincoln Townships. On March 11th of 2025, a petition to impound reroute and divert portions of County Ditch 56 open ditch was received on behalf of petitioners from Blue Earth County Soil and Water Conservation District and Michael and Liz Sant. The proposed petition affects portions of property lying in Section 5 of Garden City Township, Blue Earth County. Drainage Authority Attorney KLR Van Brugen of Rankin-Neunen has reviewed the petition and found it to be adequate for these proceedings with no bond needed, as the Blue Earth County Soil and Water Conservation District is one of the listed petitioners. On April 8th of 2025, Charles J. Brando of ISG was appointed as the engineer for these proceedings in order to produce and submit an engineer's review report pertaining to the proposed petition. My action requested for today, at today's Drainage Authority meeting, we are requesting the Drainage Authority set a public hearing date for the proposed petition and review of the engineer's review report affecting portions of County Ditch 56 open ditch on the Sant property for July 10th, 2025, and 9:00 a.m.
July 10th.
So moved.
Don't.
Clarification, that was June 10th.
June 10th.
Sorry.
That's all right. Thank you. Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to set the hearing date for County Ditch 56, June 10th, 2025, 9:00 a.m. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Is that it, Ryan?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Change up teams a little bit here and bring some planning and zoning staff up. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, John and Garrett. At this time, we have planning and zoning staff here to present their action items. This is a public hearing. Public comment will be allowed in just a few moments. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and there's a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning when you let you know when your time is used up. In addition, the board may restrict or limit time allocated to a person whose remarks are repetitive and not relevant to the matter, under consideration by the board. I ask planning and zoning to state your name and position for the record and give us the items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Constance, County Zoning Administrator. Our first item this morning is PC 07-25. It's a request from Scott and Corley Borgmeyer and Jeremy Horkey for review and approval of a preliminary and final plats of Borgmeyer's Jamestown subdivision number two, consisting of one lot and one outlot. The proposal is to replat the Borgmeyer-Jamestown subdivision, and it will add area to the existing lot. The property is zoned agricultural and is in part of the north half of the northwest quarter of Section 32 in Jamestown Township. At the planning commission, staff presented the report. Point of clarification in the staff report, the first finding references two outlots, however, there is only one, and this item has been addressed in the resolution. At the planning commission meeting, the applicants were represented. There was no public comment and little discussion by the planning commission. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff and with the condition recommended by staff. The board action for this item would be passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, John. This time, I will open up the public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 07-25, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 07-25? Last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 07-25, please come to the podium. Seeing no public comment, I'll close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the county board for action.
Move to approve.
Second? Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
The next item is PC 08-25. It's a request for review by Sam Borneke of approval of the Borneke Second Edition, a subdivision plat consisting of three lots and two outlots. The property is zoned agricultural and is in the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter and the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 24 in Loray Township. At the planning commission, staff presented the report, and the applicant was present. There was no public comment and little discussion by the planning commission. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff and with the conditions recommended by staff. The board action this morning for this item would be passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. At this time, I'll open up the public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 08-25, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 08-25? Last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 08-25, please come to the podium. Seeing no public comment, I'll close the public comment portion of this item and bring it back to the county board for action.
I'll move approval.
Second? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The third item this morning is PC 09-25. It is a request for review by Stephen and Shannon Frank for approval of an interim use permit to allow for an elder care dwelling unit as an accessory use to an existing single-family building site. The property is zoned agricultural and is in the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 34 Loray Township. The property address is 19820 618th Avenue, Janesville, Minnesota. At the planning commission, staff presented the report, and the applicants were present. There was no public comment and little discussion by the planning commission on this item. Following discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff and the conditions recommended by staff. The board action for this item would be passage of resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. At this time, I'll open up the public comment for this item. Anybody wishing to comment on PC 09-25, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 09-25? Last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 09-25, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no public comment, I'll close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the county board for action. Got a motion?
Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'd just like to add, we had some discussion at the planning commission meeting. This is a policy we put in place several years ago, so it's really exciting to see people use this policy, because I think it is definitely a good way to keep people in the area and with their families. So I think that's just awesome that people are willing to do it and make this investment in their families and the community. So appreciate that for people that are using it and for the staff putting that policy together. There's no other comments or questions. I will call for the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Garrett Althing, Property and Environmental Resources. PC 10-25 is a request from Zachary Peterson for review and approval of a conditional use permit to construct and expand an existing beef cattle feedlot. The proposed facility will consist of a total of 300 head of beef finishing cattle and 150 head of beef feeder cattle, for a total of 426 animal units. The proposed feedlot expansion will consist of both total and partial confinement barns with open lots below barn liquid manure storage and permanent manure stockpile storage. The property is zoned agricultural and is located in the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 10, Seresco Township, Blue Earth County, Minnesota. The property address is 49190 155th Street, Medelia, Minnesota. Staff presented the report to the planning commission, and the applicant was present at the meeting. There was no public comment. The planning commission commented on the improvement of the property and asked for information regarding the proposed runoff filtering system. Staff responded and indicated the system was designed by the Natural Resources Conservation Service. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff and with the conditions recommended by staff. And the board action is the passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Garrett. All right. At this time, I will open up the public comment portion for PC 10-25. Anyone wishing to comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 10-25? Last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 10-25, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no public comment, I'll bring, I'll close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the county board for action.
Move approval.
Got a second? Got a motion and a second for approval? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
That's it?
We got PC? 11-25. 11-25. We don't need public hearing on that though.
I think that, Mr. Chair, that one was removed from the agenda.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We'll deal with that next time. I think that's, all right. Thanks, guys. All right. That brings us to the end of the planning and zoning agenda. Now we get to hear from Mark Manderfield from Property and Environmental Resources on an electric vehicle.
Good morning, April.
Good morning, Mark.
Happy birthday.
Yeah.
Happy birthday.
Oh, what a fitting moment, yes.
Yeah. And you buy an electric truck. How perfect.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Property and Environmental Resources maintains a fleet of vehicles, as you know. In the spring of 2024, we did apply for an electric vehicle grant through Maple as part of the Carbon Reduction Program grant. The CRP grant provides funding to support projects that will reduce carbon emissions. The grant funds a maximum of 80% of the total project, requiring a 20% local match. PER applied for an overall project cost of $70,000 with a $14,000 local match for fiscal year 2025 here. The grant was approved in 2024. You may all be familiar. Public Works also applied for the grant in fiscal year 2024 and received their vehicle already. At today's meeting, we request the board to approve the attached resolution allowing MinDOT to ask, accept federal funds on behalf of the county. The signed resolution and agency agreement will be submitted to MinDOT for their signatures, and then following that, PER will work through Sourcewell for cooperative purchasing of one electric vehicle.
All right, you heard the request. What are the wishes of the board?
I would move to approve.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
One of the good things we did through Maple, the city, try her out.
I think the engineer's happy with theirs at this point, I guess.
And there's another round of funding available here coming up, so I'm not sure if departments will be applying for that or not.
All right.
Seems like a really good idea for, for driving, you know, in the area. You know, our vehicles aren't driven across country and stuff like that, but for what we use them for, it's perfectly fitting and should save the county quite a, quite a bit of fuel over the years.
Yeah, a good diversification of the fleet, of course.
All right, with that discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Have a great day, everyone.
You too.
Thanks.
All right, now we get to hear from Mr. Tim Edwards on some wind damage on our Justice Center. Morning, Tim.
Morning. Oh, yes, so I wanted to touch base with you. Apologies, I probably should have brought this to the board when I brought the roofing project back to you last board meeting, but according to our policy, our procurement policy for the emergency repairs for the roof at the Justice Center, we need board approval for that. And of course, we got the work done, but now I'm here for the approval to get the emergency repairs completed, which was a cost of $87,500.
Move to approve.
Second?
Got a motion and a second for the roof repair on the Justice Center? Any discussion? I stopped up there this morning. There's a lot of activity going on up there.
Yes.
Working on all kinds of stuff. There is some training up there for dispatchers too, so it was, it was a busy place.
That, and the fences looking good, too.
Yeah, it's catching a lot of debris coming flying across there.
I can only imagine.
So we got STS kind of on a routine basis, kind of picking that up on a weekly basis as well. Regarding this roof proposal as well, there's the 1.153 million that is going to be covered by insurance plus our, well, minus our deductible of the $5,000, but, and we get, that's what, part of the project that Commissioner Brenner mentioned is, the roofing project has started up there as well, so hopefully we'll get that all redone and secured up there and be watertight again, so.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you very much.
All right, at this time, we will move down to Human Services. We got Phil.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Shannon. How are you doing?
Former neighbor.
Good, good.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have a few action items to review at the board this morning, and then some informational items, as well as turning it over to Shannon from our advisory committee. our advisory committee. So I'll start right in on those, adult and disability services. The Mayo Clinic Health System Agreement Amendment is something that we've brought to the board before. This is a two-year extension from April of twenty-five through March of twenty-seven, forty-five thousand dollars per year, which is kind of a shared service agreement with them to help with some of the flow and getting those assessments done for people that are at the front end of their facility, meaning usually an ED or HELV for something and they need to get moving. So ninety thousand dollars for two calendar years, which represents a ten thousand dollar increase per year. The next one is in financial assistance, supplemental nutrition assistance program. You'll hear us talk about SNAP. And as part of that federal program, there is an employment and training element, and so there are funds available for people to help find and retain employment and become self-sufficient. The amount is forty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-four. There is both an initial allocation and additional funds that are usually received, and so this is a ten percent increase from the previous year, which is good. A lot of times, we're not getting increases, but these do have that. And then my final action item is the fee policy, which is contained in your PAC at the full policy. There is a summary page that I'll just go through briefly to give you an idea. Most of these are just technical changes of dates and page numbers. The paragraph kind of in the middle of the page talks about a more significant change where we used to send out a ninety-day courtesy letter, and we found that there just wasn't a lot of response from that letter when we'd send it out three months in advance. And so we're removing that process and having two additional times that we send billing statements, and we feel like those get a little bit better response. So we're going to try the three rounds of that, and there still is the same ten-day appeal process, so we're not changing the appeal process at all. Mental health center has different rates and different credentials depending on how a mental health professional or a prescriber is credentialed, you can bill at different rates, and we're just trying to be mindful of that, making sure we capture all revenues at those differential rates depending on the licensure. Let's see, the level two, mental health administrative activities, there was some research about spend-downs, so if somebody might qualify for a certain benefit, but they have to spend down some money in order to get there, so it's like a deductible. And you'll see that on both, it says page eleven and page eighteen, the same language, where the administrative fees do apply to spend-downs and deductibles. So if they pay an administrative fee, that does count towards that. So we wanted that in our fee policy. In between those two, daycare services, registration fees, maximum for a center-based care is fifty to a hundred dollars and for a family cost of care, I'm sorry, daycare, one fifty to one sixty-six max. And then we adjusted finally the federal poverty guidelines last year, and that is the summary. And those are my action items, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Phil. Any questions or comments?
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second for the action items for Human Services? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of additional informational items before I turn it over to Shannon. First of those being the billing unit. We've talked about this effort established in 2015, and each year, we're learning more and more about how to do this work well. It is kind of a special area of practice that not everybody has, but we've found it to be very cost-effective. And you'll see, we talk a lot about targeted case management, TCM, and you'll see the three different types of TCM listed in the chart with the amounts that we get under each of those and the totals of three point eight million. There was an increase in twenty-four from twenty-three by over three hundred thousand. The average claims are at ninety-nine percent, so we do really well with that. You will see, though, that we also chase if we ever do get denied less than one percent, but we work those individually and resubmit those, so we often get those paid as well. We do have a whole internal system, and I do see some of those, and it's kind of interesting because they'll get denied and they'll resubmit, and then by the time they resubmit, they say, oh, you're beyond the timeline. So there's like really no, it's kind of like the appeal process is you need time to be able to appeal, and a lot of times, we run out of clock. But we do extremely well in that area of practice. Staff do a great job. You'll see the drop in the mental health hours, and that's because of, well, it's at least one FTE of prescriber time. It's more like one and a half because we also had some leaves. And when people are on leave, they obviously still get paid, but they don't have the revenue. So that shows up quickly. We have rehired for the FTE that was vacated by a doc, and so this next year should bounce back up. We're certainly expecting that. And then my last one is on child support, and this might also look somewhat familiar to you all. There's the five different areas that are measured in our child support activities, and you'll see those in the boxes of establishing parentage, the support order establishment, the collections for both current support and arrears, dated dues. And then the fifth one is at the bottom, it's not in a box, but the cost effectiveness. And our cost effectiveness, for every dollar expended, we collected four dollars and seventeen cents in child support, which is a dollar fifty-two higher as far as effectiveness rate compared to the state average, which is two sixty-five. You'll see the overall volume at the very bottom of the page, seven point two million in child support efforts impacting twenty-five hundred-plus children, so a lot of volume, important work, making sure that really the kids have the resources they need to flourish. So that's the mission, and we're certainly in touch with that. I probably won't go through each chart, but you'll see, kind of self-explanatory, but we, in those first two boxes, do exceed the state target, and you'll see some of the trend lines. The collections have been a little more difficult in the past, trending down with arrears is what I'm looking at. So that's the information I want to share with the board today regarding child support.
Any questions or comments? When we say, and I think I know the answer to this, Phil, but just so I'm clear, when you say the child support program, we've collected, that's, you're not collecting resources from other state tax dollars, that's resources from the people that are supposed to be paying, men or women, that are supposed to be helping take care of their kids.
Correct. So it's about getting that money from mom or dad.
Gotcha.
It's still in our culture, mostly dad. We work really closely with Pat's folks, and this stuff is brought through court, and so there's a court order attached to it for leverage as well. And then we are the ones that chase down if there's a delay in any of those payments because it affects those kids very...
Then we actually take the money into our department, then you disperse it.
Right. It really passes through.
Passes through.
Right to usually that parent that has the responsibility day-to-day, the physical custody, the legal custody are two different parts of that.
Right. And I was sure that's the way it was working. Now, is this only, is this program only for low-income people, or is this anybody that's not getting child support?
It's a really good question, and I'm not sure, maybe Pat knows off the top of his head, but that, it is broader than just income-based, so I can give you that answer. Exactly where that line is, I don't know, Commissioner, but I do know that, yeah, if people wanted this service that we provided and that there's, it's a broader approach than just people in need, but we certainly do support those people that can't afford to get an attorney, and all that, that's part of the mission. But then you can, if people apply, we can serve them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Shannon?
Good to see you.
Good to see you again. I don't have, what I wanted to just briefly share today is, at our last meeting, we actually spent over an hour, if anything, almost grilling Angie on the budget. We talked about the budget extensively, and we really dug into, I think, some of the similar things that you actually dug into, too, and asked some hard questions. And my big takeaway was, I was very impressed with the commitment that Angie and Phil have made to working to balance the budget, the hard decisions that they've made, because we asked, so on some of these decisions, what were some of the really hard ones to make? What are the, what have you, what did you do that was, you know, where have you been making these cuts? What are some really big wins that we've done? I was, as a constituent, I was really impressed with the work that they've done, and you can tell how much they care to try to make sure that we're balancing, making sure that we're hitting our budget, and also taking care of the people who truly need to be taken care of, right? There's always that, there's that piece there. It was just really, I was fairly impressed. What I would also, what I'd also say is that I would encourage as a constituent, too, and also these things, is that there are some things that come up through the budget that we have to do. That's what we talked about last time, what are the things we have to do but are taking a huge amount of our budget? What are things that we can advocate at the state level to change either rules or also requirements? Or also advocating be able to keep our care closer by to reduce those, that cost that is to the county? And so I would just, as, I would encourage you guys to continue to ask Angie, Phil, and other people, what are some of those things that might be able to be cost-saving? Like, do we need to, can we do some more telehealth for our out-of-state placements instead of face-to-face once a month? Having our kids be able to be closer for some of those bigger services and working in that child mental health area, too, or other areas? So that would, that's what I'd bring to you, is to continue to ask those questions because I know, like, Angie's at the state a lot right now. She is advocating so hard, truly on both, if some people look at it as if for the person or for the money, I'd say that she's truly advocating for what's right and then right for both, right? I would continue to ask, how can we, what can we do to support you? What can we do to support at the state level to try to get some of these things changed to continue to help our budget in that, in that area, so they can make those decisions and keep the things that are really working well, but also adjust some of the costly measures? So that's what I have to say, but it's good to see all of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your time on that. I mean, we know all of our committees, whether it's planning and zoning or Health and Human Services, we have a lot of committees and people put a lot of energy and time into it, as you just explained. And these are really tough decisions to make because these are decisions that affect people right down to the, you know, the people that can't afford it. So it's challenging, and we have good staff in place.
Yeah, I agree. It affects a lot of people, not only the people that is being served, but also the people who are managing and working, and I know that you guys feel that, too, with, there's a lot of big decisions to make and it's not always easy, but I'm very proud that I feel that we have some really good people in place that I trust immensely. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I would just add, you know, at the AMC board meeting on Friday, we spent a lot of time, and then some of us were on the call Monday morning, the legislative up there, the call. I mean, it's pretty clear that cost shifts to the county are going to happen, and it's not just to the county, it's also to school boards and things like that, so, I mean, property taxes are going up. There's no way to look around it if these shifts come to us. We've got a lot of mandated stuff, a lot of things we have to do. There's been some hard questions, but I think there's going to be harder questions coming up as we're hearing other counties move away from all those nice-to-do things, because we can't do more with the same money and we can't, you know, we've got to do that, and I think we're going to need to make more adjustments as we move forward because as we start to see some of these double-digit levy increases, it's getting kind of scary out there. So I think we're going to have to continue to look at making those tough decisions and ask them staff help is, okay, what are the things we have to do? We know we have to do those, and why are we doing the things we don't have to do if we don't have the funds to do them?
And that was actually one of the things that I had a conversation with one of our representatives recently on the phone this past week, because it's easy to call up and say, hey, don't cut my, don't cut this, don't cut that, right? And where I, this is outside of this, where I'm personally concerned is we do have a lot of new mandates coming into play in our budgets, and because of some new mandates, that is trickling down to costing all of us more. So that's where I'm at, also, like, where we can advocate for, can we hold off on some of these new mandates? And each person can have their own ideas of what those might be, but if we have new mandates coming into our budget, that is going to be costing to everybody a lot of money and then pushing down also to affect counties, you know, lots of different areas. What can we do to roll back or hold off on some of those mandates so that we don't have that trickle-down effect? It's not just about increasing taxes, and it's not just about cutting existing things, right? Where can we, where can we find some of those other pieces in the middle and find maybe more balance long-term?
But it is about raising taxes because that's our only choice. We've got it as a county.
Right.
And until those mandates are reduced, you know, there's still mandates, so...
Yeah, and that's where I just say, is just continuing to advocate for, what can we do also at the state level with those mandates to reduce some of that mandated requirements, to change some of those small pieces that are currently affecting us, to, to be able to reduce the budget in a more effective way, to be able to, not reduce, reduce the expenditures in a more effective way? What are some things that we can continue to ask for to put in pace, repeal, push off, hold off, so that we don't have to do this big of a wave? I don't think anybody likes riding waves. Everybody likes a little more calmer water, so how can we reduce that and make it a little more even?
Yeah, it's challenging when they add the mandates on a budget year that we have a huge deficit.
Yes, absolutely.
Other years, they can help absorb that and not push it down to the counties, but if they still want to move forward with these mandates and they don't have the money, it'll be on us, unfortunately.
We have one of those, Commissioners, the post-traumatic stress disorder, which we all know about, but it's not part of the five diagnoses that we always talk about, serious and persistent mental illness that our clinic serves primarily, and they want to add that, and so it's like, how do we, how do we pay for that? It's a great, I mean, of course, as a psychologist, I'm like, yeah, that'd be great if we could power up and help those folks that are struggling with those horrible things, but we just don't have the resource to do it. One little hopeful one, back to this dilemma of how do we cut and get back to something that we can afford? The prevention piece, which I know is hard to talk about, but there is one project that I was very pleased to hear about this last week. It's called Hello World, and they take parents who are often hard to serve in child protection, who have a child on the caseload, and they basically educate them. They bring them in, and it's therapeutic, and it's education, and it's preventative. One placement, I mean, just, I have to say from my chair to you all as we have these discussions ongoing, is if we can prevent one placement, that is a huge ticket item, and I really liked your idea. I've never heard that, like, we could try to appeal to the state and the feds so that we could use remote check-in. They have staff if they're in a facility in another state. We spend all this money and time running back and forth because we have to, it's mandated, but could we ever even just put that aside for a little while? I think that's a great idea. So I really do hope that we can at least try to bring some of those really good ideas that are kind of no-brainer, cost-effective pieces, and if we could just, even just prevent a few placements, it's kind of like looking at staff, we have to get to those bigger ticket items. Staff are big ticket items, but so are out-of-home placements and a lot of other things, commitments and other things that we...
Well, and refresh my memory, Phil, but, I mean, if we have to do these checks in person, we got people flying to other states and driving for a day and driving back for an hour interview or an hour.
Right.
To me, why can't that be done? And I know we've had these discussions many, many times.
Right. Well, and, you know, that first trip, when you have the child in the car often and/or with law enforcement, those, I think, are hard, you know, you have to do that to get that child there, and a lot of times, we have two staff in the car for safety. But then, once the placement's made, I tend to, I mean, that's why I think this is a great idea, is we could just practice smarter, and I don't know why we have to go eyeballing when they have staff and you have the technology now that's going to work, you know? It is allowed in different areas, like with adults at times, but not with kids, so, you know, those are the things. I mean, nothing happens quickly, but if we could even just say, can we postpone that, that mandate, I think it would make a big difference because that, even just that, the travel time and the days away add up big time, they really do. They really do.
Well, I think that's the only recourse we have is postponing.
Yeah.
I mean, it isn't going to go away, unfortunately.
Right.
Unless everything changes and they repeal them, but.
Yeah.
We got to get some of them postponed because.
Exactly.
I think that's what we're working on, so.
I think adding things to the menu, though, I, I mean, certainly I'm a program guy, but I'm just like, wow, right now, that, the cost shifts are bad enough, but then we're going to add things to.
Yeah.
To pay for it. It's like, wow, so. Well, thank you for your time and hearing this.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Phil, are you going to be able to stick around for 15 minutes or so?
Sure.
I'd like to talk to you after, if needed.
Yeah, I'll just hang out.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
All right, with that, we will move down to item number nine, administration.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for April.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second for the minutes. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated. Still moved?
Second. Got a motion in a second on the bills. Any discussion, questions? If you're not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number eight in your, or item number nine, pardon me, in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Have one action item for the board's consideration today, and that is approval of a voluntary intermittent furlough program for the Human Services Department. And we have a memo attached from the Human Resources Director, Laura Ebelbach, providing some background on this program. The board is probably aware that we have done some voluntary furlough programs in the past during times when we have some financial limitations. And we're currently experiencing some financial concerns in the Human Services Department, both kind of existing structural deficits, as well as some of the discussion that you just had with the Human Service Director and Shannon Hood regarding kind of future potential cuts and cost shifts coming to the county. And so staff are recommending a voluntary furlough program be implemented within the department for the rest of 2025 as a way to try and impact the budget in the Human Services Department. This would be a voluntary program where staff could request time away from work unpaid up to a certain limit with conditions kind of placed on the program where basically it would not impede our ability to complete our mandated work. And so this is a completely voluntary program. Staff would make requests, much like they do for any other time off, and it would go through an approval process. Would be unpaid, but it would allow the employees to continue to earn all the benefits associated with their work with the county. And so, like I say, staff are recommending approval of this voluntary furlough program to help us try and address this structural deficit and also position the department budget in a better place in case of adjustments from state, federal governments.
Thank you, Bob. What are the wishes of the board?
So, second.
Got a motion and a second? Discussion?
I thought the article in the paper was well-written this morning. Laura did a good job.
We've been talking about this at some work sessions. It's not new, it's not surprising.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
Part of, part of the reaction to some of the stuff we got coming towards us, so.
One of the challenges is, we don't know what kind of savings we're likely to see from this, although we will be tracking it as requests come in, and so we will be able to report out at some point in terms of what the estimated savings will be, but it will be somewhat dependent upon the requests that we get from staff.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for that. Under informational items, we have filled an Assistant County Attorney II position in the County Attorney's Office. We also had a resignation of a 911 telecommunicator in our dispatch center, so we initiated recruitment to refill that position. Then we had two resignations of correctional officers in the jail, so we've initiated recruitment to refill those positions. Then we had a resignation of our Finance Director, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also had a promotion of a Property Environmental Resources Specialist I to a full-time P R Specialist II. And lastly, we had a resignation of a probation officer in our Community Corrections Department. Be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those human resources items.
Any questions? Okay.
Tab 10 in your packet then is a resolution granting the county administrator authority to execute sales agreements for the poor farm properties. We have reached agreement on four of the six parcels for the poor farm. The board had previously granted the county administrator authority to market those parcels, but we've probably missed a portion here, and so we want to make sure that the board is comfortable with moving ahead with the closing on those parcels. And so this resolution will grant the authority to the administrator to finalize those sales.
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All approved? All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 11 in your packet then is a memo regarding All Seasons Arena change orders. We have three for consideration by the board today. We have a MetCon change order for $11,338.88. This involves a photo eye on some lighting, as well as some structural improvements for the mezzanine. And we have a change order of $40,000 to rink tech. This is a result of them pulling out the rink flooring and finding that the, some structure was not where it needed to be, so we needed some different aggregate material placed there. And then the third item is an electrical through Lake Town Electric of $15,670.48 to do some additional electric work for All Seasons Arena. So the total of those change orders is $67,009.36, leaving a contingency at a little over $169,000. And again, these have been approved by the All Seasons Arena Board, but because of the joint powers agreement, the partners also have to approve it.
Okay. What are the wishes of the board?
I'll move the agreement. Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
The $67,000, that's divided between the three owners?
Yes. It's part of the construction budget, so, you know, that ultimately was based on the percentages that each partner plays in the overall All Seasons Arena funding.
Okay. All right. I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That brings me to the end of our agenda. Is there anything else to bring before the end of this order?
That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Okay. This time, we'll move on to Commissioner reports on committees. And Vance, I will start with you today.
All right. Following our last board meeting, we had a work session. The next day, I had a NACO RAC monthly meeting. Let me see here. And then on the 16th, I had a NACO Arts and Culture meeting, and that's the end of mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mark?
Okay. On April 8th, we had the work session, it's brought up. And then April 9th, you and I went to the MICA meeting up at the cities. And then April 11th, just had a virtual meeting for some change orders with ICE Arena on the 11th there. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Kevin?
As mentioned, the work session on April 8th, and we had a PZ update that afternoon. I also participated with RAC on the 9th. April 10th, attended the soil water conservation district meeting, as well as mayors and clerks. 14th, we had a NACO leadership call, and we had a Minnesota River, One Watershed, One Plan meeting. And then Friday, as I already mentioned, was AMC board meeting, and then participated in the legislative update call yesterday morning. That completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Patty?
I too attended the work session and RAC, and I had Region 9 on the 9th, mayors and clerks on the 10th, TDS Personnel Committee on the 11th, Friends of the Library on Saturday the 12th. The 14th, I had the Law Library, my first meeting at the Law Library. The 17th, I had TDS again. I also went to Tim Penny's retirement party in Oatana, and that was packed.
I bet.
And AMC call, and I went to the library yesterday and watched The Sharps War, the Holocaust movie that the MSU was putting on down there. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think most of the stuff was already mentioned, the work session, planning and zoning, drainage meeting, MICA. I don't, did you mention Highway 14, Vance? You were at the Highway 14 in Eagle Lake for a few minutes? I thought I seen you there in the open house.
Yeah, I was.
But yes, that was, so I'll report on that briefly since everything else.
I forgot about that, too.
Everything else has been touched on, but this was a, yeah, it was a good turnout. There's probably 150 people there, and they stuck around for quite a while. A lot of concerns about getting traffic across the highway and then back and forth. And then, of course, when you try to get the access across the highway, we end up with a challenge with bringing a lot of traffic through town, which it is a county road running through town, but it's still residential area, so that gets to be challenging. But a lot of good discussion, staff did a great job, and just trying to tell everyone that this is not an overnight project. This will take years to get going, and it's just the start of it, so. Yeah, and the rest of the stuff that I had was SWC, mayors and clerks. Jesse was there for mayors and clerks from Region 9. She did a great job talking about Region 9 and the economic development stuff they have going on with their organization. And that is the end of my report. Anything else to bring before us today? Adjourn or?
Yo.
Got a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Adjourn. I got it right today, Patty.